Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilman Contreras is present. Councilmember Gillian is present. Councilmember Rennbaum present. Mayor for Tim Lee Young present. And Councilmember Crumble is absent.
Okay, thank you. Would you please stand? Let's have a moment of silence, please, and we'll have the pledge. Thank you. Could we get our judge to come up and lead us in the pledge, please? Would you mind?
No, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. It's an honor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one is to approve city council meeting minutes held on April 11th, 2023. Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve city council minutes from regular meeting on April 11th, 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two. City council may consider, discuss, and take action to approve a joint resolution and boundary agreement to exchange land in their ETJs and adjust the boundary between the ETJs of the two cities. Ms. Betty?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this resolution has been passed by the city of Weatherford. The city of Weatherford and the city of Willow Park desire, again, we did it last year just about this time, to exchange some of our ETJ land. If you look on your Exhibit A, you can see that what the cities are trying to achieve is Weatherford will have ETJ north of White Settlement Road. Sorry, that's turned sideways. But, and then the city of Willow Park will receive ETJ land from the city of Weatherford south of White Settlement Road. Weatherford can service with utilities the area up to the north of which we really can't, especially with sewer. The area to the south, if we acquire it, then future development, we could serve it with water and sewer. This will provide for contiguous development for both cities and allow more efficient development. As I said, the city of Weatherford passed the resolution on April the 11th. There is another small tract which is shown in Exhibit C that is in the Crown Road area. And that will actually square up for the city of Willow Park. This is the area where we did the ETJ boundary adjustment last year. And so the yellow area that's shown on that, that 20 acres will also go to Willow Park. So we will have either in our city limits or in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, all of that area south of Crown Road. If there were any questions?
These are all one motion to do both?
Yes, there is one resolution. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Betty, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the joint resolution and boundary agreement between the city of Willow Park and the city of Weatherford to exchange land in their extraterritorial jurisdictions ETJ and adjust the boundary between the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the two cities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I'd like to express our appreciation to Weatherford for working with Mr. Grimes and Betty and all concerned on this also. Thank you. Item number three. Final plat for Lot 1, Block 1, Willow Park Water Reclamation Area, being 8.610 acres. Wesley Franklin Survey Abstract Number 468 in the city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Ms. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for the property that's owned by the city of Willow Park for the 8.610 acre tract which is on J.D. Toll's Drive that is proposed for the public wastewater treatment facility. You received the preliminary plat. Excuse me, the, there's a typo in the, on the brief. It says preliminary plat in the heading. It's not. It's the final. So the final has been, final plat has been reviewed by the city staff and recommendations are included in the document that you see before you. And staff recommends approval. And the Planning and Zoning Commission has approved the final plat as provided.
Thank you, Tony. Any other questions for Tony, or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve of the final plat for Willow Park Water Reclamation Area as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number four. Final plats for lots 1 through 5, Block 1, Nolte Edition, being 29.99 acres. David Addington Survey Abstract Number 21 in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Ms. Tony?
Mayor and Council, coming before you again is the final plat for this lots 1 through 5 and Block 1 of the Nolte Edition. This is in our ETJ and required to be approved by the city. You received the preliminary plat before you on November 15th, and this is finally coming back around to you. This went before the city staff. So we've reviewed all of that. We asked for clarification for there's a Bankhead Cove that is not shown on the plat but is shown on a map and was told by the applicant and property owner that in fact that is erroneous on the map. So it is not actually called, there's Bankhead Cove, and then there's another that's shown like as a driveway between lots 1 and 2 to lot 5. It's shown in there's a, there's a, there's a driveway there that's in lot 1 that is shown that it's supposed to be, it's called Bankhead Cove, but it's not. So it's a, it's a typo on the maps that they've asked to have replaced or repaired, but it's not done yet. The only comment that we had as staff, as did Planning and Zoning Commission, was to add an additional 15-foot right-of-way dedication to East Bankhead Highway for future expansion as Bankhead Highway is, according to our city's thoroughfare plan, to be a 90-foot minor arterial. So we have requested that they give us an extra 15-foot right-of-way on Bankhead on their side, which they've agreed to.
Are these lots getting water and sewer? Or are they supplied?
The water is available there, and I think sewer isn't yet. But there are sewer, there's sewer and water on each well, on each site.
Okay.
Each lot.
Are they asking for annexation to get service?
Not at this time.
So this is the approval of the final plat?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Tony, or do we need, or could we have a motion, please?
Tony, have they said what they are thinking about doing on those plats?
It's just subdividing it for individual sale.
Okay.
Yeah. They have houses that are located on each one of those anyway. And lot 5 has a pond on it, and they have cattle on it. I think he said that the gas well that's on there is going away. So that was a concern for Planning and Zoning, but it's to be a moot point. So it's just for individual subdivision for, for sale.
Got it.
Okay. Any other questions, or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve of the subject final plat with conditions as stated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Reports. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, we have various reports on the agendas. And we'll let department heads provide that information. We'll start with Michelle Galker, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Council. I actually have very good news for y'all. We went on the Fort Worth permanent connection at 11 o'clock today. It only ran for about 30 minutes before they are still working on the line to Hudson Oaks. And so they were pulling water out of it. So we shut down so that they would, we weren't interfering with them. But as of tonight, we will probably start pumping and taking water full-time, so.
Just to clarify, we've been on temporary connection.
Yeah, we have been on temporary. But we, and we've been off since October, just so y'all are aware. Y'all have my report. Just the, I'm not going to go through everything, but on the next 30 days with the Fort Worth project, just so y'all are aware, we have our skater contractor coming in tomorrow. He's going to start fine-tuning everything. We already kind of know what our set points are going forward. And so we're just going to find out, tune everything, and we should be ready to go. The classroom training with the BFD will probably be scheduled in the next couple of weeks. On the sewer plant, it was published in last week's paper. Some important dates coming up is May 4th. We have the pre-bid meeting. That is not a requirement for the contractors, but it is highly suggested that they show up. And then we will open bids on the 18th at 3:00. And as of today, at 5:00, there was 50 copies of the plans had been requested from Jake W. Martin. Of those, 20 are general contractors, and the remaining are subs and suppliers. So we're going to have a really good bid. Y'all have any questions for me?
Yes. With the connection of Fort Worth, can we, I guess, once everything's gone and everything's fine-tuned, can we put out to the people in Willow Park like what we project, like the water hardness is going to be so that way they can set their soft water tanks?
We can. It's going to, we're going to probably let it run for a while and then retest all over town because we won't have a good until it starts really blending in the system.
Right. So that way people know kind of what they need to do whenever it's on, so.
We can do that.
Thank you.
We'll follow up on that question. Do you expect that it'll change significantly? I would assume during summer months, we're going to be having quite a bit of Fort Worth water, surface water.
Uh, yes.
And so that during winter months, we might have a totally different hardness.
Right.
So, okay.
That will, that will definitely play into it.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Planning and Development. Tony will provide that report.
Mayor and Council, you have the report for the first quarter for Planning and Development Department. We had 141 total permits that we've processed thus far, which is pretty outstanding since I think from April until December of last year. I think we only did 150. So we're already way, way ahead. For our intake, we have $109,505.20 that we've taken in for permit fees thus far. I've listed the commercial permits for you and the residential permits. We've only had one commercial permit that's on here, and that was for the Orthopedic Clinic Finish Out for 110 Mary Lou Drive. And I have also listed on the current construction that you can see that it has the tenant finish out for Ortho Clinic. This is current for the current quarter, and I've put all of them on the map as well so that you can see currently what it is. So although the permits are only for the first quarter, what's on the map is actually current. So we have the finish outs for the other ones on there. And the Willow Park Baptist Church Gymnasium is on there also, so that's coming online. And I do want to let you know that today we received the site development plans for Tommy's Boats. So that's on the Porter addition on that, on that corner property that's on the service road next to 40 Fence. So that'll be coming online here soon. Any questions for any of that?
Looks like you're busy.
A little busy. We have a new permits tech. So I think if you haven't met her yet, her name is Christine, and she's doing amazing. She's in her second week, and she's rocking and rolling. She's great, so.
And I'm taller than her.
And you're taller than her.
Very good, Tony.
Unrelated, our new sign on City Hall went up today. So if you didn't notice it, it'll hopefully be lit tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job, Tony.
Chief Franklin with our police report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So it's been a couple crazy months for the police department, the last couple, beginning of the quarter. You've got my report. Just go over some of the highlights, some of the stuff on it. We are proud to say that the, we did implement the first SRO at Trinity Christian Academy. Meeting with Dr. Newby the other day, we, we talked about it. He's very excited. He's happy with the results so far that we've had at the SRO, and he's looking forward to continuing that partnership with the police department. For the past two years, we've been trying to get vehicles. So proud to say and happy to say that we finally got our two Explorers in. They were, one got striped out today. The other one is getting striped out the rest, the end of this week. So they are about to be pushed out onto patrol. So that should finally get us back to where we need to be. If you've seen some of the gray Tahos rolling around with the different schemes on it, those were actually administrative vehicles that we turned into patrol vehicles because we were so short, because two of our vehicles had pretty much dead-in-the-water on it. So we had, we've been struggling trying to get our vehicles and trying to get equipment, but we are up and running now. We should be fully ready to go on our vehicles and our equipment, and we're ready to roll them out. Manpower shortages and hiring issues. Everybody right now is struggling with this. I just saw that Lewisville is offering almost $100,000 for two patrol officers. So that's a battle that we're constantly having to fight. We did recently just hire one. It's in the Weatherford Academy. He graduates in May. So as soon as he graduates, we put him through the FTO process, and then we will only be one short. And we are actively recruiting for that position now. We've actually had a couple people call interested, and they've put in some applications. So hopefully, we'll be able to fill that spot pretty soon as well. So Glock has decided that they want to just stop making the Glock 17, which is the weapon that we carry. So we have partnered with Primary Arms, which is a local dealer. It's a national dealer, but the guy's local. And we have agreed to purchase 20 new Glock weapons to replace the ones that we have. They're going to purchase our old weapons back. So they're going to give us up to $300 for those guns. So what would have been a $10,000 purchase is now only a $5,000 purchase because of the agreement with them to purchase those weapons. So that will get the officers new weapons and the ability to have red dot sites to go on them. I'm still working with Primary Arms and trying to get a deal on that. That'll be a better site for the officers and give them, you know, that little bit of extra security for them to be able to have on their weapons. And then the CPA started last night. Those class numbers, there's a four. We had a record-high attendance. We actually have 15. It says 13 on there. We had two show up and had one more actually entered today. So it's a, it's good. We went from four last year to 15 this year. So it's definitely a better, better class. They're excited. I talked to them a little bit last night, and they're excited about trying to get involved in Willow Park and helping the department and seeing everything that we do in that class. So I'm kind of excited about CPA class. I spoke with the Weatherford High School intern leader, the instructor that's over the internship program there. We actually still actively participate in that. We have an intern that comes every six weeks. We have a new intern that comes and rides with the officers. They are, they're with them for about an hour and a half of each shift. So it's a good thing for the program. The Weatherford High School instructor says he has had nothing but positive reviews from the students, says that they are excited about our agency, and they have learned quite a bit from the officers while they're on the street. So it's a good partnership that we're going to continue to keep, try to grow as we, as we move on through the, with the Weatherford step or the Weatherford program. The Texas Best Practices Program, the annual report is actually due next month. I've already submitted it. It's been accepted. It's still good. They said we're still in compliance. Next year, our, the re-recognition program starts. So every four years, you have to get re-recognized. That starts next year. They looked at the programs and everything, the files that we have. They see no problem with us getting re-recognized, but we'll have to go through that whole process next year, starting in January. So everything else is so far, it's been good. We're, we're still active in the, in the neighborhood. Our Facebook account is very active. We've got a very good listing and following on our Facebook. We're hosting the Red Cross. We've got three blood drives coming up. The preserves, the officers are actually getting out doing walkthroughs, and the residents over there actually love that. They have, they're very excited about everything that's going on over there. Sergeant Ramirez was actually voted as chairperson to represent Willow Park and Parker County in the Cooks and Safe Kids Group. That's a group that basically does the car seat checks and does everything through this. So good to have actually someone, a member of the agency, to be on there as a chairperson on that group. Corporal Hamilton is currently in a DRE school, which is a Drug Recognition Expert School. It's a very intense training, 72 hours of classroom training. And then he has to do three weeks of actual field. He has to go to the Houston County Jail and do actual reviews on everybody there at the county jail. Currently, there are only 350 DREs in the entire state. So Corporal Hamilton will be added to that list, and he will be one of three for Parker County. So kind of proud of that. I'm glad Corporal Hamilton is excited about getting that started. You can see the stats. This is actually starting in January, up until April 17th, when I pull these numbers. 999 calls for service. I'm sure that's definitely gone up. 81 arrests resulting in 125 criminal charges, 554 citations with 770 violations, and 1,015 warnings. That's since January. Any questions?
Busy.
Been busy.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Next, we have Municipal Court. Judge Norrell, you want to? I believe this is your first time to present to council. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you. Mayor, Council, Mr. Grimes is right. I was sworn in approximately over nine months ago. So this is my first opportunity to give a little bit of the state of the court this evening. So if you'll bear with me, I'd asked Brian if I could have 30 minutes, and Mayor, he said that wasn't going to work, so.[1488.86][1488.86](Laughter.) When I came back on board last year, the primary vision for the court was increase safety through efficiency. A municipal court with a high caseload, we want to enhance public safety, but we want to try to do it by disposing of cases in the most efficient manner. I created a judicial action plan that you'll see there in my written report. The first priority that we had was to work with the Willow Park Police Department. It's been my experience now over the last nine months. We're very privileged to have such fine men and women wearing the badge here. And what that does, it's a, it's a synthesis because the officers are out there writing tickets, knowing that they have a court that's going to properly hear those tickets. And then conversely, we can rely upon our officers to apply the facts and evidence in a way that those tickets can be sustained or disposed of in the best possible manner. The second step, when I first came on board, was to implement a new set of standing orders for the court. I did that systematically by contacting several other municipal courts, some local, some larger cities across the state. We put together a more streamlined and detailed approach to standing orders that would give Ms. Low and now Ms. Frazier added flexibility on a day-to-day basis to handle any kind of questions by citizens and to try once again to increase the efficiency of the caseload and disposing of that. Another thing that we were seeing again nine months ago was we were having folks having to show up to court over and over again. That wasn't good for them, but it's also not good for the court because once again, efficient disposition of the caseload actually leads to greater safety. So the way that we implemented a strategic plan to improve that was first of all through the increased use of driver safety programs. And if you'll note down at the bottom, you'll see some final numbers that I'll conclude with. But if you'll just notice, on the completed driving safety, those numbers have increased almost 300%. This is for the past six months, not the entire nine months. But it is consistent and reflects some of the most significant changes to the court's docket. Increased driver safety, of course, is a win-win for everybody. Not only is it added education for anyone out there getting a moving violation, but it also helps the court because we can then monitor those folks to make sure that they adhere to all the criteria necessary on their ticket. Another thing you'll see at the bottom, we've had 160% increase in completed deferral dispositions. Once again, a win-win. The drivers like it. It's, it's an opportunity to keep it off their record. But more importantly, from the court's perspective, we can monitor those drivers for a period of months to make sure that they are adhering to everything that they've told us that they're going to do. Just a couple of other brief things. The new collection firm that the council approved, thank you, is working great. So that has improved efficiency on that end as well as improved communications by court staff. And again, thank you, Council, Mayor, for making Ms. Frazier full-time. That has given us the resources that we need to, to really implement our goals here to the maximum. So with that being said, I'll just conclude with this. If you look at the bottom, the total number of cases disposed of was 678 in the six months preceding me coming on board roughly. And that number has now increased to 1,124 for 165% increase. Again, all within the context of public safety as the primary goal. The natural result of that has been an increase in revenues of over 20%. Any questions?
Very good. We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Judge. Next, we have Gretchen Vasquez, City Engineer. Give an update on a couple of different projects we've got going on.
Mayor, Council, included in your packet is the city engineer's report. I've been pretty busy too with, because I've been doing some of the construction inspection for, for most of our projects. So I, I try to go out there every day, twice a day. So I go there in the mornings, go back out in the afternoon. So I want to give you an update on some, some of our projects, starting with the street improvements project on Crown Road. Well, the contractor has construction crews on Crown Road, Kings Gate, Ranch House Road, and Trinity Port. On Crown, Crown Road- On Crown, Crown Road, they continue to work on the concrete rip wrap. The driveways are complete except for one. There's an AT&amp;T cable. It's in the way. AT&amp;T has been out there twice. They'll be back again this week. They're going to have to lower, relocate some of their AT&amp;T lines. But the bar ditches on Crown, on the northbound lane of Crown Road are pretty much at final grade. And that's pretty much all we've got left out there. We tried to switch traffic on Monday, but there was some work left. So I talked to the contractor this morning and we're shooting for maybe mid next week to switch traffic, but we'll communicate via Facebook and let everybody know that we'll, we'll do that. On Kings Gate Road, the, they poured Friday and again today. The, they're, they're up to Meadow Place. Yeah, Meadow Place. That's, that's kind of where they're at. So they set up, pour, set up, and they're, they're moving north. That's on Kings, Kings Gate. Ranch House, the, the traffic control plan is, is, is up. The contractor is going to start out there tomorrow. It's a one-way westbound because we're working on the, we'll start working on the eastbound lane. So it's, it's one-way westbound. Trinity Court, I did not have it on the list, but they have a crew out there. It's a small crew. They're working on the driveways. They want to do those first. There's 14 driveways. They'll try to do two a day, but they want to do those first. And that's on, on Trinity Court. I've included a couple of site photos. There's one on, that shows Crown Road. So, so I've got Crown Road looking south, looking north, the one on the bottom, the Crown Road looking north. You can see the bar ditch. I think it's one of the first ones. But you can see where they've graded the bar ditch. Some of those bar ditches are going to be concreted.
The bar ditches will be concreted?
Some of them.
Okay.
Yeah. There's the Kings Gate photos. I took those maybe a couple of weeks ago, but that section there, the one that's looking south towards I-20, that's all, they poured concrete. I think that was on Meadows Place. So that's all concreted and they're working their way north. The subgrade prep, it's pretty much at final grade. So again, they'll set up, pour, set up, pour. On the drainage improvements phase one, the project's about 10, 15% complete. We, it started April, April 4th. It's a 180-day, it's a 180-day project. The contractor started at El Chico. The plans called out for a concrete hit wall at the upstream end of two 48-inch culverts. That work is complete. They've graded about 600 linear feet of channel. There was a section that they, they skipped. So they're on the upstream end of Channel B. There's the project location map. They're working on Channel B. So again, 600 linear feet of channels been graded. They're on the upstream end of Channel B right now. There's three, three-by-fives boxes up there. That work should be completed by tomorrow. They'll, I talked to the contractor today and it'll, it'll be another six weeks before they're completed with Channel B. After that, they'll move on to Pleasant Ridge. There's a four-by-eight box we're going to install. So. I've included some site photos of Channel B. That one looking west, that's towards, looking towards El Chico. You can see where we've installed that hit wall over there at the end. And then I've got the other one looking east.
You're talking about this inlet right here?
Yeah, the concrete hit wall at the end. Yeah. And then the next photo is just looking east. I think that's about 600 linear feet of channel. On our drainage improvements phase two, we haven't started on that project yet, but the design's 100% complete. It's pretty much channel improvements, culverts, and we, we're going to advertise on Friday. I need to check with Derek to see that that's still a go. I think there were some drain achievements that he was still working on, but if that's ready, then Friday, we will advertise on Friday.
That was sent out today.
It was sent out today.
Yeah.
Actually about an hour ago.
Okay, so good. So we're good. Okay.
Be in the paper on Thursday.
Yes. Okay. On the wastewater treatment plant effluent line, we had a pre-construction meeting April 10th. We have not started on this project. The official start date was April, this week, April the 20th. I talked to the contractor this morning and he's two, two, three weeks out. I think we talked about that at the pre-construction meeting, so, but that's, that's where we are. On the wastewater treatment plant, I think Michelle pretty much covered that. Kings Gate Road, Kings Gate Road Bridge replacement, our other project. This is a partner, partnership between the City of Willow Park and Tech Dot to remove and replace the Kings Gate Road Bridge. And I talked to Tech Dot this week and the, their design is 30% complete. They said that they were working on the right-of-way documents or right-of-way acquisition. They said that the environmental documentation had started. Leading date is still July 2024. So that's where we are. I try to call Tech Dot every, I don't know, every two or three weeks just to see where they're at, but that's, that's the latest.
Did you, are you in on conversations as far as the pricing of the bridge goes and...?
A little. I think we're still waiting. We had asked for information, clarification on the estimate that we had originally, and it looks like it's, I don't know, it's, yeah, it's different from what they submitted last or provided us with. And so, no, still waiting. But we, we did ask.
Just because our match recovered under the, when we did the drainage project, excuse me, at Meadows Place, and then another drainage project on Ranch House Road. But there are, we may try to widen the bridge to accommodate some other things and there may be some extra costs. It were insignificant to start off with, and I think they're still going to be that way, but the cost is going up a little bit, so we're watching that.
And the bridge location is still going to be in the same location? We're not moving the angle of the road entry into the...?
No, we're not. We had to make a little adjustment on our Kings Gate project to match Tech Dot's, but it was minor. No. But as far as the location, mm-mm.
Okay.
No. I think we were going to try to set up a meeting with Tech Dot just to...
Another meeting with Tech Dot?
Another one. Okay. All right. And last but not least, there's a Tech Dot project. It's milling and overlaying of the I-20 lanes from US 180 to the 120, 130 split. We attended, staff attended a pre-construction meeting at the Tech Dot area office in Weatherford. And project starts May 20th. Northeastern, Eastern Pavers is the contractor. And Tech Dot said that they were going to send us more info, construction notices, traffic control plan as, as we get closer to the start date. So we'll communicate as we hear from Tech Dot. But they, I think they said that they, the work was going to be during the night. Okay, so I've got it noted in there. Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that's all I've got.
So for that project there, what they're doing is they're just kind of, I guess, whatever the, the surface is right there on the highway, they're just going to scrape that down and, and put on like, kind of like what they've done in the Hets and Oaks area?
Yes.
Okay.
Milling. They'll be grinding, removing that topmost layer. Mm-hmm. And resurfacing.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you. And finally I have Rose with our communications and marketing update.
Good evening all.
Need to mention this.
To go ahead and start, I'd like to briefly go over some of the events that we've done so far this year. On February 14th, we welcomed everyone to City Hall with a ribbon cutting. We also had open house tours and a lot of great visitors that day. It was a great day for us. On March 27th, Mayor Moss hosted the Parker County Clergy Luncheon. This was our fourth annual time to do that event. Wonderful turnout as always. And then last weekend, April 15th, we had the second annual Willow Park, which had the highest turnout that we have ever had for a City of Willow Park event since I have been with the city. We are, I am personally super, super pleased with the way that day turned out. Big thank you to all of our sponsors and vendors and volunteers. It took, took a lot of people to pull this off. Also, a big thank you to Alito ISD for allowing us to use the grounds at McCall Elementary School. Having that extra space and those extra parking capabilities made a huge difference for us. Moving on, a lot of you are probably familiar with the fact that I have been working on a three-year strategic plan for the Communications Department. On that plan, I have identified three goals for 2023. Reach unreached audiences, a branding standards guide, and a crisis communication policy. I think all of those are probably pretty self-explanatory. I feel like those are the most immediate needs in our Communications Department and working with Fire Marshal Snyder and Chief Franklin from PD on our crisis communications. I hope to be bringing that to you guys sometime in the next few months for approval, just so we can be better prepared in the case of emergencies as far as our communications goes. Now digging into some of the data, and there's a lot of things to be excited about here. Our Facebook reach in the last 90 days was 34,992. We did receive a boost from a couple of emergency events that tend to kind of skew the numbers or the emergency not necessarily quite that strong. What I am pleased to report is that in the, since this time in 2019, we have gained 3,000 Facebook followers. That is roughly three a day, which means that while we might not be growing at a rapid pace, we are growing at a steady pace, which pleases me a great deal. We have recently started dabbling in Instagram and our follower count is gradually bouncing up on that as well. Our Facebook audience is 76% women, which is a very interesting number to me because a year ago it was 64%. So we're gaining ground with the ladies. Now, now we've got to attract the other half of that audience. Going over to our video reach, our YouTube channel in the last 90 days has had 58 views. Most of them are for three minutes or less. What is encouraging is that sometimes when I go back and look at the metrics on our YouTube, people are viewing videos from six months or a year ago, which means that having that archive of that material available is obviously helpful to our citizens when they do choose to go back and watch them. On our Facebook videos on the last 90 days, we've had 1,200 viewers. Of those viewers, 40% for three seconds or less, which means those are people who are scrolling through and just happen to see it. Of that 4%, 54% are 15 seconds, which means people are watching, stopping, watching for a few minutes, moving on. Of that 54%, 263 are one-minute views or longer. So while we are getting traffic and we are getting views, it is not necessarily one of our more popular methods of communicating. Going on to the next page, our website. I have got the tool this year. I call it my new toy. I have robust website analytics now and boy, are they fun for me. If you want to hear me nerd out for a while, just ask me to give you more details on that. Our top pages for the first quarter of '23, most of which you would expect homepage, utility building permits, police department, the courts, the heavy hitters, the frequent flyers. Two of them were news or announcements related to emergency messaging. One was storm recovery from the storm, the windstorm that we had come through, the thunderstorm in March, and the other one was the power restoration update a few days later. As you guys well know, that was a, that was a hot item. Anyone that wants more data on the numbers on this and wants to nerd out for a while, feel free to ask me to elaborate later. What other channels do we use? We have our AlertSense call-out system. You guys may recall that a few years ago when we implemented this, we had a 5% response rate on the original, on the original. We have gone from roughly 100 subscribers to roughly 600 subscribers. So slow and steady is going to win the race for us on this. And I'm getting, I don't have data on this, but anecdotally, we're getting a little bit less calls by people blowing my waters, turned off, why haven't I heard anything about this? They're still happening, whether or not happening at the rate of frequency, at least as far as my personal observation goes. I do not have any numbers to base that on. Our website announces subscriptions, which is a little button you click on the website to subscribe to when we push something out. Those continue to grow and perhaps most importantly, I'm seeing those shared in secondary locations by folks who have received that, that news and said, hey, let me Christmas out with some other folks. I feel like we have some strong partnerships with our local media. Community News is very good about helping us get the word out when we need to. We are also exploring using Nextdoor as a channel. We have, I have identified through a SWOT analysis and some other, other research, we have a significant population that is only using Nextdoor to get their names. And while it is not my most favorite channel, I, I do feel like it would be effective for us to begin messaging over there. So I'm beginning to explore practices. I'm talking to some other cities, they're using it effectively, and that's something we're going to look at going down the road.
That's scary.
It might be scary, but sometimes we got to go where the people are. So to sum up, there is, there's a lot to be really happy about. We've shown this continued growth of progress over the last few years, continued engagement with getting more people coming in. They're saying, I saw this here, I saw this there. Obviously, there's always opportunities for improvement, but I feel like we're on a good path and I feel like we have a really good plan to go forward. So do you want to have any questions?
Question for, on the Facebook page reach, is that unique reaches or is that over, could be repetitive people looking at the page over a period of time?
Ladies, hold on a minute. I don't want to give you that information here. That would be unique reaches.
So new people just getting onto the Facebook page looking at?
Well, that reach is, and I will tell you, if you look at the graph where the big spike is, one of those is when we had a big ice storm. And the other big blue spike is when we had the big tornado, or not, pardon me, thunderstorm. This was mostly people sharing our post-farm life during those two events.
Okay.
So that's why we got the unique reach that we did. It was not based on people coming in clicking on our page. It was based on shares that were kind of proper dating. We had pages like the Weatherford Democrat and Parker County Information that each had 10,000-plus followers that were sharing those, that information, those kinds of things.
Okay. And another recommendation would be on, so property taxes are a big issue right now. A lot of commotion about that, so a lot of confusion also, I think. So if there is a way to put together some educational videos, because, you know, people get confused about this stuff, so, about how the property taxes work, you know, how you get your, so your thoughts on that?
We actually published a video in October.
Video?
That wrote down how our tax rate works, how property taxes work, how the revenues work, how the...
Okay, so you were there?
It got 25 views.
I was one of them.
It took us roughly 16 hours to produce.
Wow.
So I don't feel like videos are a good ROI for us. That said, I have actually been talking with Mayor Carton-Yun about some messaging we can do related to property taxes. I've kind of been in observation mode the last couple of weeks. I'm trying to take a look at what information folks are really looking for and what our FAQs are going to be on that. There's a lot of the, as the kids say too, long good read when it comes to statements like that. I want to make sure that what we're putting out is bite-sized and digestible and we're not drowning people in information. So right now, I'm kind of in a, let's see what the big questions are and let's, let's see what the heavy hitters are going to be, and then we come back and we message with those things.
And I may have seen that video, but, but the one for property taxes, is that on YouTube? or is that on your Facebook?
It's on both YouTube and our website and our Facebook.
Okay.
So we're down to 23 views outside of council.
Twenty-two.
Get it on Nextdoor.
How many people are actually watching these, like, 30 days from now, when we look at the analytics, what do you think?
My count is averaging between nine and 11 people.
Okay.
And that's when we have a really big day.
And the retention on these are 90 days after the minutes have been approved?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dan.
The retention on anything, any, this is a paper or recordings or anything like that, are 90 days after the minutes have been approved. So after those 90 days, they can go away.
Okay.
We do keep our videos archived. We have every video archived since before I started working here, though they're all there on YouTube channel. If you were so inclined and had nothing better to do with your weekend, you could go back and watch Council meetings as far back as 2017. That said, viewership on these videos, I mean, people are watching for 30 seconds and then clicking out. They're just not going to tell people about these.
Thanks, Rose.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. This time, we're going into executive session to discuss agreement with Parker County ESD One to sell public safety building, fire station number two, Section 516 Ranch House Road, 551071. Consultation with attorney. Next item is to discuss discussion of purchase contracts for the purchase of 120 El Chico along with adjoining unimproved properties. Section 551071, consultation with attorney. Section 551072, deliberations regarding real property. We're going into executive session at 6:48 PM. We're out of executive session at 7:15 PM. Thank you, counsel. We have a motion concerning the contract for the purchase of 120 El Chico. Crystal's going to make the motion, read the motion.
Suggest a motion.
Suggest the motion.
Mayor, council, the suggested motion is to approve a approved property contract with Parker County RE Partners LLC for the purchase of 120 El Chico Trail and to approve an unapproved contract, unimproved contract, that's correct, with I-20 KC LLC for the purchase of 120 El Chico Trail.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept it, please?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any other questions or discussion? Fall in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much. Mayor and council comments. I'd like to thank Mr. Grimes. We had a mayor's breakfast this morning here at the council meeting, at the council chambers with all the mayors in Parker County. It was well-attended, well-received. I'd like to thank Mr. Grimes, Rose, on getting all that together. And I'd also like to thank Rose, Tony, and Betty for the sign out front. It looks great. Thank you for your work there. And I'm very proud to be associated with this city. I think we have a great council, a great staff, and things are going very well. So, Mr. Grimes, thank you and thank the staff. Counsel comments.
I want to thank the staff and Mr. Grimes, all the projects make a good progress, and things are looking great, water systems, sewer, roads, everything.
Yeah, I want to echo Greg's comments and also thank Rose again for putting on Willow Bark. That was fantastic, and I really appreciate all the hard work you've done on that.
The weenie dog race was the highlight.
Oh, yeah.
Weenie dog race.
I'd like to say thank you to all the public, or to public works all the way down to communications. They've done a great job. This seems to have been just a positive, positive meeting tonight moving forward, and I think it's great. I'm glad to be a part of it as well.
Mr. Grimes, you've got two minutes.
I want to thank the staff for everything they've done. This is by far the best staff I've worked with. I want to thank council for giving me the opportunity to, and the resources, to hire these people. They're very good at their jobs. They seek to be better, and they understand what they're here for, and that's the citizens of Willow Park. And they are very competent and knowledgeable, and like I said, it's the best staff I've worked with. Thank you, council. It is a pleasure to work with a group like this. Me and Pat have often had discussions, and we've been in communities where councils may not necessarily get along, and it's pretty, pretty bad. So thank you for y'all's leadership on these issues. May 9th, we do have an agenda item. We're going to have an interlocal agreement with Hudson Oaks. They want to put a repeater on our water tower, and we'd like to assist them with that if we possibly could. I think Pat maybe will send a red line contract out today. I promised Councilman Crummel that I would bring this up. Tonight's his last chance to win a baseball game, so good luck, Nate. But on a serious note, appraisals went out. I know the notices went out last week, and if you're like me and everybody else, there was a little bit of shock there. I received a phone call from a number of people, namely Councilman Crummel. As we are starting to put our budget together and we're starting to develop that budget, we will see a significant tax rate decrease. On your notice, if you got it in the mail, it doesn't say what the bill, what the estimated bill is, but on online, it does show you what the estimated bill is. It has last year's tax rate of 53 cents and change. We intend to lower that significantly. I don't want to commit to a number now, but it will be greater than the 10-cent increase of the ESD. We should be getting our preliminary values in sometime this week from the appraisal district, and I'll have a better idea and a better sense of that. Another thing we were talking about this morning, we are going to go below the no-new revenue rate, meaning we do not have to do the mathematical judgments of 30 days prior and 10 days to. I'm going to confer with Pat, but we'll get a budget schedule for you, but we just simply need to have a public hearing to adopt the budget. So that is some good news for the, for the, I'm about to get gavelled off. I'm doing good news. He still wants to gavel me off. That'll be the, for the summertime. We'll have more information on a budget schedule probably at the May 9th meeting, but it's going to be a good time.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Fall in favor? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.